Okay. Good morning, everybody. I have to use this, even though it's a small room for OPTV. My name is Jimmy Anzavino. I'm your tax assessor. I was appointed in 1993. So I've been here a few years. In fact, Diane May was one of the people I worked with a few years ago when her husband, Chuck, was on the council back then. It's very nice to see everybody, but in all honesty, I wish I didn't have to see you. As you're aware, we do what's called an annual reassessment. Now, what is an annual? With me, excuse me, is Rick Del Gercio. He's the president of the appraisal company that performs the annual reassessments now for about six, seven years. So what's the purpose of the reassessment? Well, we were ordered by the State Division of Taxation to conduct a reevaluation or reassessment. An annual reassessment is much less expensive than a revaluation. A revaluation, you do like a snapshot once every seven, eight years, whenever your market value falls below eighty-five percent. So instance, if your home is assessed at a hundred thousand dollars and the average sales are coming in at one hundred and sixteen thousand, you got to get reordered to do a reevaluation. Revaluations very costly. They have to update the tax maps. They have to get approved by the state. There's other little requirements that are being done that cost a lot of money. So the mayor and council decided if we do an annual reassessment, that's controlled by the assessor's office, me. And we farm out to have a company do the work. They have the inspectors go around and measure the homes. They prepare the valuation letters. They send them out. They offer you an opportunity to sit and talk and discuss the value with them. Now, on the valuation letter, we make sure we include what the new value is and we include the projected tax rate. Now, the projected tax rate is before the mayor and council, the school board have an opportunity to review your budget. Now, remember, sixty-five percent, on every dollar, roughly sixty-five percent goes to the school. I think it's really a little higher. About a quarter to twenty-five to thirty cents goes to your municipal budget. Your municipal budget's responsible for the building, you know, your streets, your police, all your services that you receive, garbage. And the balance, about ten to twelve percent, is the county portion of taxes. Now, how they come up with the tax rate is we take all the assessments, the total assessments, your total expenditures, the money to be raised by taxation, divide one into the other, and that comes up with the projected tax rate. Now, as you're aware, probably since 21, 22, there haven't been many sales on the market, right? Everybody's, you know, people are not moving up, you know. How many people here bought within the past five years? And your interest rates are probably pretty low, right? Now, the interest rates are six and a half, seven percent. You're not seeing that mobility. That limited supply, you know, I think as of last week in town, we had one, I think we had two homes for sale on the open market. So you take those two homes, obviously you have a lot of competition amongst those homes that's driving up the sale prices. And this is a trend that's been going on since 2023. Just for example, we had thirty-two sales this year in the whole town of twenty-five-hundred homes. We had thirty-two that what we call usable sales. Now, what's a usable sale? It's defined as the highest and the best use of sale a property would sell for on the open market. So if I buy a house from my brother, it's not considered usable sale. If it's a foreclosure, if it's a bankruptcy, if it's an estate sale, if it's an off-market sale. So if somebody buys a property off-market, that's not considered usable, therefore it's not allowable by the state. So Mr. Del Gercio and I went to the county tax board through the Division of Taxation and said, "We don't really have enough sales to come up with accurate assessments." We could have mingled it around, but we didn't have a, what did you call, a wealth of sales, a knowledge where we felt comfortable putting the values on. So what the state basically said is, "Okay, we'll give you a little chance to getting more sales." So what we did was, by the way, does anybody know the percentage of homes to commercials in this town? It's about ninety percent residential, ten percent commercial. And because of that, it's a very wonderful, welcoming town. But that ten percent commercial, let's take an example, go Burns and Row building, everything, all those big office buildings up on the northern end of town on Kinda Mac, they're worth less now than they were twenty-five years ago. So that's a problem. You know, you only have ten percent of the commercial properties to offset the residential properties. The average residential assessment is how much, Rick?
Right now, it's just under eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand dollars. I think the property that's on sale now is over a million dollars. Now, this isn't a trend just for Oradel. You're seeing this trend all over the place. But I work full-time in Paramus, and you see in Paramus, they're going to have an increase this year because the hospital abandoned them. You know, hospital, they didn't abandon, excuse, you're all familiar with Valley Hospital, right? Well, last year was taxable because it wasn't completed. This year comes off the books, and that's a hit to the town of about six million dollars. So they're going to see an increase because of that. But they're going to recoup that because they're able to maintain the commercial structures. We all know retail's down. What do you think happens in the office market the past twenty years? Is it up or down? Down a lot. So our office market increased in town almost a point, just a little less than a point. The commercial, the residential values went up a lot more. Why? The state basically said, "No more. You have to do it. You have to get it done. You have to use what sales you had." He goes, "You got a good enough sampling period this year and the prior two years to adjust for time to bring them up to the market value." So that's why you saw a tremendous increase in your assessments. That's the only reason. Now, with that, you saw a projected tax increase. The speech I'm having, speech, the talk I'm having with you guys is exactly the same talk I had with the governing body. You'll notice you got your letters late and you got your postcards late because we worked up right until the last minute to try and get this amended. The mayor and council have done an outstanding job, you know. I'm going to call, you know, DEFCON four or three. They've taken the position that, believe me, this wasn't an easy conference, you know, easy meeting to have with your bosses either. It's not something you want to tell everybody because all the past seven, eight years, we had the annual reassessment. On average, everybody's taxes, based on the reassessment, were flat or went down. We were able to have, with the new construction, with, you know, homes, improvements, renovations, between that, between the little increase in commercial properties, we were able to, you know, prove a negative amount to start with, with the taxes. Now, remember, that's before the school gets involved, the county and the town. And school's your biggest portion, and it makes sense. You know, you got your most employees, your most facilities, teachers, insurance, so buses, so that all adds up into it. So the one thing that we have to, I mean, in order to keep your taxes stable, the commercial properties have to have, we have to reinvent or relook at what we could do for that commercial property tax base. Now, I know, I'm just going to give you a little, overall, I'm going to give it to Mr. Del Gercio, get into a little bit more specifics. There are a couple of programs out there. Who's, and I don't think it applies to most of you, but it definitely applies to some of you, the senior freeze. Does everybody, does anybody know about the senior freeze? Okay, now, the senior freeze is a program that goes from, if you have not applied, it takes your, you got to be over sixty-five. Your income for this year has to be a hundred and sixty-one thousand and change for 2023, and for 2024, it's about one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So it goes up. You had, obviously you have to live in the house you're applying for. And what happens is you fill out the application, and they made the application easier, they combined it with the anchor program. One of the ways we could reduce taxes is probably reduce the heat in his room, but we'll get on that on another time. But, so you fill out the application, and you're going to get the difference in back taxes from 23 to 24. Five years from now, you're going to get the difference in taxes from 29, 30, to 2023. So that's a good mechanism for the seniors. The only problem is, and we've tried how many times to get it, where they adjust it off the bill, and they choose not to do that. The state says, "No, nope. We want you to fill out the application, mail it to us, we'll send a check back to the people." Okay. Well, it'd be a lot more inexpensive for you. Your tax bill was seven thousand dollars. You get your bill each year, seven thousand dollars. It should be ten thousand dollars. We send you a check for three thousand dollars back to the town. That's not how it works. You also get the anchor program. The anchor program, you could receive up to eighteen hundred dollars depending, depending on your amount of income that you make. Now, just to give you an example, how long, how good these programs are, my mother passed away last year in ninety-six. She was in the program since Governor Whitman was there. She used to get back about thirty-eight hundred dollars in taxes. So it works. It's a great program. And there's another one coming out called State New Jersey. You probably heard about it. Don't get too excited over that right now. It's a five hundred thousand dollar income limit, which I believe everybody qualifies for. You could get up to six thousand dollars or half your taxes back. So if your taxes are ten thousand dollars, you get back five thousand dollars. The only problem is they, there's like a cost adjustment there where it's kind of predicated at the state budget is over X number of dollars. But getting back to us, so we did what we always do. We sent the guys, men and women, around to measure the homes. I'm sure they knocked on some of your doors. They asked to come in, they looked at their houses. Now, remember, this isn't a full appraisal that you're getting like you, if you're getting your refinance or mortgage. This is an appraisal where we use a state formula. Now, the state formula comes out of the state appraisals manual that was updated twenty-five years ago. So the appraisal manual prices out the cost of the home. And we're able to determine that, you know, right away, based on the information that you let us evaluate. If we don't get into the home, it makes it a little harder on us because we have to estimate what's inside the house. That's why we're very diligent in saying, "Please let us into the house." I think we even send out a follow-up letter if we don't. We sent out one letter if we didn't get in, we send out another letter. So after that, we can, we tabulate all the values. After we tabulate the values of the homes, we take the sales of the properties, remove the house value, and that's how we're able to determine the land value. Has anybody visited the website from AAG? Let's see, show of hands. Okay, so you'll see on that, they have all the sales listed, every residential assessment, and the, basically, your neighborhood that you live in. That's how we determine what the values are. Are there any questions so far on this, sir?
Yeah, I was asking, sorry, if you're measuring, if you're not home, what are they measuring for? Isn't that already listed information by the town? If they're just looking at it from the outside? If they don't get into your house, what are they actually measuring? And I guess what is their background that gives them the knowledge to price things in that way?
Hi. So as Jim explained, there are, when a municipality gets ordered by the tax board to do a revaluation, they must comply. And about five or six years ago, Oradel complied, and they did a full revaluation. At that point in time, I don't know if you all were living here then when we did the full revaluation, we did knock on one hundred percent of the property doors. We got into upward of ninety percent. That was what we consider a full revaluation, okay?
Exactly. I'm sorry. When was that?
I believe that was done about five years ago.
Two thousand?
Yeah. It was done about five years ago. And I'll get to the answer for your question, but let me take this as an opportunity to expand on something that Jim said about the annual reassessment program. My firm does revaluations. I've been doing revaluations for thirty-five years and going back several decades. It was just a matter of, you know, county board orders a town to do a revale. Revale contacts firm like mine. We come in, we do the revale, we set the assessments as of a specific point in time, and then we leave town until we're called back five, seven, ten years later. And that was essentially how the whole state operated, say, through the nineties and through most of the two thousands. The problem with that, though, is while I would set the assessments, say, in 1993 or 1997 or 2000, the assessments would remain valid for anywhere between five to ten years. Specifically since COVID, though, the market has been so volatile across all different property types that towns are starting to recognize that when they call firms such as myself in to do a, what I call a one-and-done revale, okay, here you go, here are your numbers, call me in five years, like a year later, two years later, the numbers are all, they're all out of whack because we've all, we've all seen how volatile the economy has been, the political landscape has been. Mortgage rates went up two, three percent in one year alone, one year. And so what I've proposed, not only in Oradel, but in the rest of my clients and up to about, you know, thirty, maybe half the county, in Burton County, is, you know, let me come in when you're ordered to do a revale. Let me come in, do your revale. But rather than pay all this money for a revale that might not be accurate any year or two down the road, let me stay in town for a much smaller, you know, maintenance fee and do what I call another reassessment each and every year. The better terminology for that is more like a maintenance program than an annual reassessment program because that's what I'm doing. Quite frankly, that's what we've been doing here in Oradel at a, off the top of my head, Jim, what, what the town pays me per year, but it's a very small fraction of what a revale would cost. Now, in the five years that Oradel's been doing this program, they do this annual reassessment or, let's say, let's call it a maintenance program, and they have not, nor will they have, to do a revaluation so long as they keep maintaining the assessments. In the past five years, the other half of the county that isn't involved in this program has all since been ordered to do a full-blown revaluation.
And somewhere within five years of each other.
And somewhere within five years. They're ordering these towns to do full-blown revale, costly, full-blown revaluations, sometimes within two years, three years now, for no other reason other than that just the market has just been crazy. So I think it's very smart what, what Oradel's been doing, and rest assured that had we not been doing this annual reassessment since we did our full revale five years ago, given what I saw over the last two or three years with the market in Oradel, you most definitely would have been ordered because, as Jim said, the threshold for being ordered is eighty-five percent. And trust me, values in Oradel have gone up more than fifteen percent since the last revale was done five years ago. Quite frankly, I'm amazed at, at the prices that I've seen in this town for the last two, three years. Again, the average is, average assessment right now is, you know, between eight and nine hundred thousand. That's the average. And there's a lot of sales and, that are taking place in this town that are, that are well over a million dollars. And that, you know, twenty years ago, I, I was involved in Oradel, and I don't ever remember there even being one million dollar sale in this town. Even, even ten, fifteen years ago, I don't remember a million dollar sale. But now, that's almost what, what you see now. So...
And that's the problem compared to commercials?
Yeah. So, so again, I'll circle back to the question. I also want to expand on something Jim said with respect to the tax rate. It's a very, it's a very simple mathematical equation. You take the aggregate of all the assessments, the total, and you simply just divide it into the budgetary need, county, school, local. And the number you get is the tax rate, okay? So, you know, that tax rate is based upon, simply based on whatever the budget is that particular year. So it's worth saying, whether you're doing a revaluation or an annual reassessment maintenance program like we're doing, each and every year, the tax rate's going to go up so long as the budget keeps going up. You know, we could stop this program today, and next year, the taxes in town are still going to go up if the budget goes up. And as we all know, budgets go up. They usually don't go down. Those are probably coming in the next several weeks to months.
The mayor and council, I could, I got to take this. The mayor and council are holding annual budget meetings now, and it'll be advertised when the budget hearing is. But they took that raw number you got, and they're really going to chop it down.
Oh, the hearings public?
The public hearing is, the department head meeting's not exactly because it's all, you meet with thirty or twenty different departments.
You don't want to listen.
Yeah. If you, I'm sorry I don't have that answer, and I should, but if you, let me take my cell number down, two oh one, nine oh six, and everybody can have it, two four six nine. It's on my answering machine. I'm sure one or two of yous called me over the past couple of weeks. You know? So I'll get you all those dates and times.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, right before we, yeah, before, and, and before we get to that question, there is one more analogy that I like to, to give to all these towns because it applies to every town that I'm doing this in, in that you want to look at the, the tax base in this town as, let's say it's a pizza pie, okay? And the circumference of the pizza pie represents the aggregate of all assessments, residentials, commercials, apartments, industrials, et cetera. And within that pizza pie, every one of you here today represents a slice of that, okay? Now, your slice is going to be much smaller than a commercial property slice or a inertial property slice, and higher-end homes represent a slightly larger slice than lower-end homes, but you all represent a slice of that pie, okay? And until we bring in new properties in town, which they are looking to do, the circumference of that pie will remain the same, but the individual slices will change as a result of what we're doing. So for the past four or five years, we've been lucky here where the commercial property slices of the pie have either remained the same or are getting bigger, which means that the residential slices are offset by getting a little bit smaller. And that has worked out very good for, say, the residential homeowner, not so much for a commercial owner, but a residential homeowner. The problem that Jimmy explained at the onset is that we've, we've made those slices of pie to the commercials as, as big as they're going to get, and some of them had to be reduced because the value's just not there, especially for the office buildings. It's just not there. At the same time, the slices of the residentials are, have to be increased because, quite frankly, the values are increasing. They are. That's just a fact. Now, are your taxes going up as a result of that? That shift from the commercial to the residential? Yes. If there's a silver lining in all this, it's that your properties are worth a heck of a lot more today than they were five years ago, okay? The sales are bearing that out. Now, individual houses here and there, and there and here, there might be circumstances where it's not, if you let your property go or if it's in a, you know, has, is riddled with some issues and so forth, but it is a fact, generally speaking, and the, and the sales bear this out. Property values have been increasing over the last five years dramatically in this town. Okay, so now, I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Can you, please? Because you can't hear. I'm sorry. Hey, if you stand in the...
Oh, he's got that.
Hello? My question was, the evaluators who come around to look at the residential properties, I understand the move to yearly, and that makes sense, but when an evaluator can't get in your house, what measurements are they taking and how do they determine that? You mentioned this formula and the pie, right? So that, understanding that, but how do they actually calculate the value of your house just by standing outside of it? And what are the measurements they're taking to do that if they're not let inside?
Okay, so the, the exterior inspection is as follows. We measure from the outside, okay, not the inside, and we're mandated to do it that way, by the way. And everything from the outer walls and gets calculated in the total square footage. We do a site review. We look at the site, you know, if there's any issues with the site. And then we do try to get into each and every home. If we don't get into each and every home, we have a history of, of, you know, permits with the home. We have a history of what was in before, but we also will estimate the interior, at which point homeowners are urged to call us up to, you know, have us come in. Those homes that we didn't get into, we need to get into those, otherwise we will estimate, and we will estimate to their highest, fullest potential. So rest assured, anyone who does not let us into the house, you know, they're going to be estimated either at where they should be or maybe even slightly above. Jim and I were talking about this earlier, about the getting, getting hold of your property record card. If you look at the letters that just went out, there's a, there's a number you can call to get a copy of your property record card, and, you know, we'll turn it over to you, either via email, fax, mail it, et cetera, within, usually that very same day. Look at the property record card and just make sure everything's right on that.
So it hurts us if we don't let the assessor in?
Yes.
It does, yeah.
It's a common fallacy that, "Don't let them in." Pull up crosses and garlic, "Don't let them in."
Yeah, the last two years, I've had an assessor come during work hours, so, right? I'm never home at one o'clock in the afternoon, right? So if I'm getting hurt from that, shouldn't they be scheduling times if it's?
Well, they do. They leave a sticker on your door.
Yeah, they leave a sticker sometimes.
I've never received one.
Wait, 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 wait. Hold, we're, I know it's a crowd. We're all going to have a chance to talk. Don't worry about it. But let's keep it somewhat organized where if you got to say something, just come up to the mic and we'll say it. No problem. It's all got, he's still got the floor. Yeah. So, so at any time, first of all, at any time, if you knew someone was there and you weren't home, you call our office, we'll schedule something for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Now, for all the other people that we didn't get into, we're glad we, just call the office, and we're glad we scheduled an appointment.
We, we have a, we have a crew out there right now who, you know, will be at your door as soon as you schedule something, you know, call our office and, and we'll, we'll make sure that we coordinate that. So you need everyone up here, correct? Okay, so whoever's next, if you don't mind coming up here.
So the questions I have are sort of related to the order. Did that come from the state or the county?
It came from the county board of taxation, who's empowered by the New Jersey State Division of Taxation to do so.
So I'm assuming, based on all of this reevaluation, my tax is going to go up by three thousand dollars or so on my house. That means there's going to be a pretty big windfall for the town in terms of revenue?
Well, no. That's why I made that analogy with, with the pie. It's a zero-sum game. Every tax dollar, from, put the budget aside. Let's assume for a second that the budget stays exactly the same, this year as it was last year, okay? We know that's probably not going to happen, but let's just assume that it does. When Jimmy and I do this, this latest assessment, it's simply a redistribution. The circumference of the pie does not get any bigger. Not one tax dollar is raised as a result of this. Within the pie, though, some go up, some go down. So if, if one dollar is raised within the pie, somewhere else in the pie, one dollar's going down. That's a mathematical certainty, okay?
So what you're saying is like the commercial real estate has gone down?
Correct.
And therefore the taxes, so that...
So, so I don't know if it's going to work out exactly like this, but if you go up three thousand, it's because the office building just dropped three thousand.
Okay. And then the second I had is, from a square footage perspective, I think I'm like twenty-two hundred square feet, and I'm... square feet, and I'm probably in line, but when I look at my neighbors, they're like twice the size of me, because everybody's redoing their homes, but their percentage is not as big in the valuation. So, I feel like I'm paying more than everybody else should be paying in that regard.
Well, again, that's, that's, that could be, I don't know the specifics of that example, but?
Just if you just went by pure square footage.
Yeah, it, it, well, but it could be, it could be, we're directed simply by the sales. We don't have any opinion as to what's worth more, personal opinion, as to what's worth more larger homes or smaller homes. But sometimes, larger homes just aren't moving to the same degree that smaller homes are. It doesn't always follow that, and the sales bear that out. You know, there was a trend a few years back, I don't know if it still holds, but there was a trend a few years back where these like super-large homes just weren't selling because people just didn't want to buy super-large homes, because they didn't want to pay the additional maintenance to such. And so, your average 1,800 to 2,200 square foot house became more attractive to the millennials, and the millennials, which is a whole nother new market of people coming in, they reject the 5,000, 4,000 square foot house, and they want the more modest 1,800. So, as a result of that?
That necessarily runs true in this town.
Well, well, I, I can't?
Because most people have been redoing the homes, they're buying them as a better investment to, to build a bigger home. I mean, I get it, so it's not?
Remember the SALT tax a few years ago?
Uh huh.
And if you paid before December 31st, you got the deduction.
Right.
There were so many people that prepaid their taxes that year, so that's?
That, I'm sorry, that trend tends to hold true, but I'll be happy to go over your assessment. Now, that's why we list all the assessments to square feet, but age, quality factor, type of home, it all kind of plays a role. If it was just square feet, that'd be so easy for us to do, but we wouldn't need you. So, yeah, before the next, did that answer your question? Okay. Before the next person comes up to ask a question, I would ask that if there's any questions that are specific to your property, specific examples, you know, the assessor and I are standing here without a database, so we're unable to, to speak directly to a specific example of a property or what's in it or a sale, but if you either contact the assessor or my office, we're fielding phone calls still as of yesterday, we're still getting phone calls from people, and we have all the data there, and we're more than happy to discuss the nuances of your property and what's in it, and give you your record card, and, and reschedule an inspection and so forth. So, if you can, if any of your questions pertain to anything specific, please just either call our office and work it out through our office or Jim, and we're here today to speak more on the generalities of what's going on in town.
Thank you. Two questions. First one's kind of quick, just a clarification on something, on something you said earlier. You said that the tax rate will always go up. I'm not sure, is that true?
I don't think we said that, no.
I think you did at one point, because we understand taxes.
The budgets will always go up.
Exactly.
Right.
But where the tax rate could actually go down, based upon the assessments and the need, you know, the, the, and the budget.
I love talking into the microphone. I hope it doesn't make, I just lost 80 pounds, I hope it doesn't make me look heavier now. Phew, I was getting nervous, wanted to get at least one laugh this morning. If we don't do a reassessment, and if we don't change those values, now, the rate has dropped a little, so if somebody's value was $100,000 each, you remember when assessments were $100,000? But assume it was $100,000 and you didn't do a reassessment in 10 years, then the rate would go up. Now, if the letter that you all received, it shows an increase in values, so the rate's gonna come down, but that goes back to that pie theory, where how much of the slice of the pie do you get?
Right, I just, a clarification on, because I, I thought you had said, and I'm pretty sure you did, that the rate will always go up, when you meant taxes.
I, I, I probably misspoke, I probably meant budgets always go up, because in my experience, at least in the town I live?
Sure.
Either the school, or the county, or the municipality, someone of those three is gonna raise their budget.
Right.
Right? The, the other thing which I like to put out there is, again, mathematical certainty. If I were, theoretically speaking, if I were to come in next year into Ordeau and just take every single assessment and equally just increase it by 10% across the board, 10% increase for everybody, and the budget stays exactly the same, it is a mathematical certainty that the tax rate that following year will drop exactly 10%. See how that works?
Yep. All right, my second question is, what percentage of residents received a follow-up assessment letter? In my case, it was a reduction, and how did you come about coming up with that reduction? What was the precipitating factor for the follow-up letter and a reduction?
Right, so we're, we're still, we're still working on that right now, and make no mistake, we are, we just want to get to the right number, we want to get to the right answer, and we have, we have no, my firm is an outside firm, we have no skin in this game, I just want to put the right number on. A lot of those reductions are a result as, of the prior question about, we went back out and we looked at a house that we didn't get into, and they didn't get a, they didn't have a finished basement, we took it off, they get a new letter, right? Sometimes people come down and they bring information that's relevant to their property that we might not have seen before, and we react to it. So, do we make changes? Absolutely, we make changes, so it's worth, it's worth looking into.
Do you have any kind of a figure of what percentage of residents received?
I would say, I, I think, I think it was roughly about, you know, 40 to 50% of the people who came down saw some degree. It might not have been a lot, but it was some degree.
Now, in my case, I didn't, I called just to question what happened, why it was so egregious, a, an increase, but that I didn't, you know, request anything, I didn't ask for anybody to come out, and I received the follow-up letter. I mean, again?
Again, now you're getting into specifics, I would have to?
My, I guess what I'm getting at is that what precipitated such a huge increase? I mean, five-fold assessment. You talked about maintenance, year after year after year of an assessment. Where were the, where was the maintenance? Why didn't the maintenance program, year after year after year, pick this up?
Okay.
Why in just one year is there such a, you know, my assessment went up, you know, probably 60%?
Okay, that, that's unusual. Okay, I can, I can't speak to the specifics of your property?
No, I understand that.
But that's, that's unusual, okay? If, if, there, there are several reasons why an assessment would go up. Number one, and, and this is the majority of the owners, property owners, it was based upon whatever the particular sales and market forces were in their individual areas throughout town, okay? That's, that's usually the main reason why it went up. In addition to that, though, so much people do work to their houses, okay? And we picked that up, maybe it was work that was done a couple of years ago and we didn't get to it until now because we didn't see it, or it wasn't, it was done without permits, or, or what, I'm not saying that's the case with you, I'm just saying that, that's another reason why we increase assessments, is because if somebody, if somebody puts an addition on their house, they're gonna get an increase for that. Now, you're gonna get that anyway, whether we do the reassessment or not.
Again, you're speaking to individual things, I'm talking about the big picture. Why?
Sixty, the, I can, I can?
Why in one, not even in my case, just why, why are we even having this meeting? Is because everyone is shocked by what happened in one year. Why, over the years, didn't this maintenance program?
I explained that earlier.
Make adjustments?
I explained that earlier.
Well, I don't know.
Oh, no, no, okay, let me go into more detail. The year before, you had, I think it was 18 sales in 2023, 18 out of 2,500 properties sold that were usable, that weren't under construction or resold. The year before, you had about 37 or closer to 40 that were usable. Now, remember, if somebody re, puts an addition on their house, that's not a nonusable sale because they sold it with the old number. So, you had in total for three years, less than 75% of the homes. The state, now, make, I just want to make sure that everybody understands this, the state of New Jersey said, "We have to adjust it this year because you have a fair sampling of sales in each particular neighborhood." That's why. I'd rather not put a house that I think the value is on, on a higher assessment, as opposed to what I know it actually is. So, if I know, if I have sufficient data that says this house goes from 100,000 to 130,000, I can come up with that number. If I have some, if some data that says, "Well, I think it goes from 100, 100 to 130," or 100 to 110, and somebody says, "How'd you come up with this?" "Well, we had this one sale on the other end of town that's sort of similar to your house." I didn't feel too good with that. I didn't feel too good with that because I know you wouldn't feel too good with that. And I would have a tough time going to the mayor and council. By the way, I want to thank the mayor for coming today. He cut his vacation short to come here. He's the one who, and the council, who organized this meeting, so a lot of thanks, you know, and, again, taking your time away from your, taking time away from your, he said he's giving up his seat for everybody else. Is that perfectly clear?
Well, no, I, I do understand, and I, and I, I guess it's just we got kind of caught in the grooves, if you will take?
Well, we got comfortable, we got very comfortable, I mean, we got very comfortable, not you, we got very comfortable prior to this year. Like I said, you're all wonderful people, and I've seen many of you on an occasion. I'd rather see you for a cup of coffee and a donut, but instead of having this meeting. So, why we're having this meeting is because we want to inform everybody, we want to be totally transparent and let everybody know the process.
Thank you.
Here's an old friend, a friend, I guess we're both a little up there now.
Does the property record card show if you had an, an inspection in the last five to six years?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We'll leave it in the middle.
For the senior freeze or anchor program, if you're making, well, the anchor program would be, now, I'll do the senior freeze, if you make more than 161,000 in 2023, or 167 in 2024, you're eligible for that. Okay, say you were eligible, but then the next year you made something higher than the amount they raised it to, and then the following year, do you then get taken off the senior, senior freeze, and then when you do meet the requirement, get put back on maybe the next year?
That's a great question, yes. What happens is you file, you'll get denied for that year, the year after, you'll be eligible. You may inherit a home or something like that, or, you know, you may cash in your stocks or something that causes you to go over that number. So, if your base year was 2020, for the sake of argument, and you don't qualify this year, next year you fill out the forms, you'll re-qualify.
Would that follow through?
Go back to 2020. Oh, yeah, and it, and it goes back to 2020.
And my other question is, one of my neighbors called about her assessment, and she was sent a listing of homes that had sold in, I don't know if it was the past year or two years, and she was told to pick out, I believe, three of them that were equivalent to what she thought her home was, and her, she got a letter that her value of her recent assessment went down. Is this something where if I call your office, I can be sent a list of the homes and still be able to look at it and pick out comparable homes to lower my taxes? Is it still possible this year to lower what my house was assessed at?
Yes, it is. It is. I, I spoke earlier that my office is still fielding phone calls, we're still scheduling inspections if they need to take place, and we're still having these conversations. And, again, to reiterate, you have two people standing up here, the two roles here, you know, Jim is the tax assessor, and so he has all the answers relative to, you know, the specifics of, of the assessing department, your taxes, your, the senior freeze, et cetera. My role is simply to set a value on each property, and my, my role begins and ends once I set the right value. So, if you have an issue with your value, okay, you come to me, okay? And first thing I always tell everyone is, you know, did we get inside the house? If not, here's the property record card, let's schedule an appointment, let's get the record card correct, meaning, make sure I have the right number of bathrooms. Let's go over the objective data, okay? Make sure that I have the number of bathrooms correct, make sure I have the, whether you have a finished basement or a fireplace, et cetera, et cetera, make sure that the home is, has been described accurately on the record card, okay? Once we decide that all of the objective information is correct, then we move to the subjective. I just assessed you at 900,000, you believe your house is worth 800,000, okay? I don't, I don't get into the tax consequence of that, okay? That's the question for the assessor. What you're talking to me about is, you put me down for 900, and my house isn't worth 900. So, my first response to you is, okay, show me why you don't think so, right? And you're going to present me with a house across the street that's exactly like yours that sold for 800, a house up the street from yours that is exactly like yours that sold for 800. You do that, and you'll have no argument with me, okay? I'll say, "That's it, you're right, you're right." I have no, like I said, I have, I just want to get to the right number, okay? I'm also the one who is responsible, if I disagree, to represent the borough down at the county when the appeal is filed. Now, if you file an appeal at the county board of taxation because you think that your assessment is too high, not your taxes, but your assessment, and these are the county tax board rules, these are not the assessor's rules, they are not my rules, it's the Bergen County Board of Taxation rules, that if you go down there, you're gonna have to prove to them that the number that we put on is higher than what your house is worth. And the only way, the only way you can do that is by finding light properties that have sold for less. If you do that, it won't even get down to the, to the county board, because I'll make the adjustment myself if you do that. But if you come down and you say, "Yeah, my house is worth 800,000, I just think taxes are too high in this town," my office isn't gonna make a change, okay? If you say, "You had me down for three bathrooms, I only have two," 100%, I'll change it, if that's the case. If you have the evidence, 100%, I'll change it, if you have the case. If you're just reacting to this, everything we're talking about today, your taxes are going up, the shift and this and that, I mean, you can certainly have a discussion with the assessor, you can certainly have a discussion with the governing body. Gentlemen there took notes on when the school, the school board, they're really kind of the culprits here because they collect 65 cents or more of every dollar, so whatever their budget is, is gonna have a big impact on your tax bill you get this summer. So, yeah, and? Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. One more question. If you're remodeling something on your house or adding something and you get a permit, and the permit has not been yet, the job is done, but the permit has not been looked over and approved, not the permit, the work that was done has not been approved by the building department, are you taxed as soon as you ask for the permit on it, or are you taxed after it's finally approved, or when are you, does that affect your taxes?
That's a great question, and I was gonna get into it. When you take out a permit, I get a copy of the permit. You'll see this smiling little fat body coming around, three months after you took it, or definitely in the summer, to see what you did. So, if you took a permit out for a deck, I'm gonna come around and look at it, you're gonna say, "I didn't get a C.O. on it." Well, it's there. And if you go to sell the house, or it makes it more valuable, somebody would say, "I don't have a railing, it's there, it's done, you may not have called for it, so we're gonna assess it." One of the other things with permits is, the state kind of changed the law a few years ago as far as finishing your kitchen or renovating your bathrooms. If you renovated a bathroom, and, we all did it, you start out by saying, "I need a new toilet, my toilet broke, I need a new sink." Well, you don't have to get a permit for that. Well, all of a sudden, now you gotta take out the vanity and you put in tile and marble because the ground's kind of, you know, the floor's shot. Before you know it, you have a new bathroom. We don't have a record of that, so when we come out, that's one thing we'll notice if the bathrooms are upgraded. By a show of hands, how many people think we assess by the number of bedrooms you have?
Total square footage.
Total square footage.
Oh, not number.
Number of bathrooms and bedrooms don't matter. So, if you had a one-bedroom, what'd I say? Too early, you know, Saturday, huh?
Total square footage regardless.
Well, yeah, it's the square footage on the first floor, the second floor, if you have unfinished areas, that's a square footage, you know, it all kind of adds up. If I may, I know you two already speak, but I just want to touch on one thing because it was brought up, an appeal process. It's very possible, in a normal world?
It's very possible, in the normal world, you may disagree with your neighbor, with the town about the assessment. You may say it's worth 100,000, we say it's worth 110,000. You have up until May 1st, it has to be in the county by May 1st, an appeal. Now, the appeal, as Rick said, it's got to be based on market value. As of October 1 of 2024, that's the deadline. So, when you come up with a date for what's the value of the property, you use it on that October 1st basis. If you said December, November, no good, that goes to the following year. So, you got to come up with comparable sales. And it's not cheap to file an appeal, over $500,000, that's $100. We, through the website, you'll see all the sales that we use to come up with the values. We suggest you look at those sales and use those. You know how many times somebody will come and they'll say, I got a colonial, their colonial's 2,000 square feet, they give a colonial at the other end of town, 1,000 square feet. And when you take that square footage price or the land size and you recalculate it, the house is actually worth more. So, what we try and do, what I try and do, is once you file, once you get the application, we do this every day for 30 years. You don't. Give me a call, we'll go over the appeal form, I'll go over your comps, I'll say, yeah, this is a good comp, it's near your house, or it's close, similar to your type of home, but the one that you got on the other end of town doesn't work. It's just not comparable, it's smaller than yours or whatever, and it sold for more. So, when you file an appeal, don't feel, and look, it's not an adversarial position, we want the assessments right. That's our goal, we just want to get the assessments right.
What's your cell number and account?
201.
If he answered your question about open permits?
About the permit?
Open permits. What was the answer on the open permits?
When the work is done, not necessarily the CO given, that's when we assess it, okay? Funny story, years ago, somebody had a new house, not in Oradell, I work in multiple towns. Ah, I didn't get a CO. Well, you live in there, the house is all furnished, but you didn't put up a railing, so you didn't get a CO, I'm charging you for it, so. Cell number, write it down, guys, and it's on the website. 201, I forgot, modern age of technology, put it in your phones.
Which website are you talking about?
Town. Town website.
And what section in the town website is going to list the appraisals?
Oh, no, 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 that's on the appraisal's website, the company, the letter you got, it's on that, oh.
You got a car.
Okay, 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 again, we'll get back to that, I'll give you all the information later, it's NJAAG.com.
Backslash Oradell.
Were the answers on, were the bathrooms counted or the bedrooms?
No, it's, okay, it is backslash Oradell. See, I'm not even a high-tech guy. The website's NJAAG.com, and it lists all the sales. If you go to that website, it'll come down, wait, espeto, wait, espeto, I'm not cursing anybody, that's just an Italian word for, hold on. By the way, anybody who wants a donut?
Yes.
What'd I say?
It's NJAAG.
What'd I say?
AAG NJ.
Okay, someone's kind enough to have a letter right here, it's-
It's NJAAG.com/Oradell.
Okay, did you hear?
Right, go right to the Oradell information.
Correct.
That's the assessor's website.
Yes.
That's my website that I have dedicated to this job, this particular job, and on that, there are information relative to other assessments, there's sales, I think I even have like a tax impact, organized by neighborhood, she's on it right now on her phone, so.
I'm happy to see you.
So, if anyone has any questions, you can just see her afterwards, so.
I started off just going to question comparables, and then it got to be down a rabbit hole of how people are treated when they call up about your assessments. I live on Grove Street, and I'm not going to single out one property, but that person has just finished, brand-new house, has twice the amount of land, new buildings, two-story garage, fireplace, elevators in the buildings, and they were assessed at $100,000 more than my house. I don't want to get into individual things. But when this was brought up to the tax assessor, he goes, and they also wound up getting lots of tax credits, that we did make a mistake and we'll correct it next year. And then this person said to my wife, do you know that when we tell these people that we're correcting their taxes, we tell them who reported it? Who sought the investigation? So, it was taken by me as kind of a threat, that if we go and redo somebody's house, we tell them who brought it to our attention. When it was actually admitted by the assessor that it was a wrong assessment, that we fixed it, you're blaming me. Instead of saying, we made a mistake, we'll fix it next year, but remember, it was the Oberlander family, that's my last name, that lives at 325 Grove Street, that turned you in.
Okay, I'm glad you said that, because I had a call with your wife yesterday.
Yep.
Right? And that's the furthest thing that was the conversation, not the furthest thing, let me explain.
Okay.
Because you're going to get, maybe she misinterpreted me, she said, there's a house next to that she wants to use as a comparable. I said, okay, that's great, but I can't reduce your taxes based on a similar assessment, right? So, after that conversation, she said, oh, okay, well, I think they're not assessed correctly. I said, I already called the appraisal company, because this was our second conversation. She called me when I was away, and she was nice enough to let me finish my vacation before she called. I immediately called the appraisal company, and they were going to send somebody out to do an inspection. Now, it's hard to increase an assessment after the year goes on, but at the end of the year, like I explained, we could do what's called an omitted assessment going back. She proceeded to say, well, I think my assessment should be reduced based on that. I proceeded to say, I can't do that, I could get in trouble, I could lose my license. She said, are you going to tell the person? By the way, I had no idea who it is, because I just got an answer on the cell, I just got a message on the cell, it didn't say anybody's name, she didn't say who she was, I have no idea who she was, but she did say you worked at the high school.
Yes.
Okay, that I remember.
Tax dollars go to my-
So, after that conversation, I said, I don't know how it came up, I said, usually what happens when we go to knock on a door, the person's going to say, well, how'd you see this, or why are you here? I said, well, we're here because it's new construction, which may not have been done by the time I came around to do the added inspection. Again, I was driving in my car, so I didn't have the information. Or a neighbor complains, and that's all I said. I'm not, I didn't say, first of all, I couldn't say it was your wife, because I didn't know who she was. Did I, ask if I ever addressed her by name, because I never did, because I didn't-
Well, she said the person will tell my name.
I, yeah, okay.
Okay, I know, these people are waiting, I don't want to have the-
And that's kind of a personal thing, so that's exactly the extent of the conversation.
But, and I'm sure everybody has almost the same issue, these evaluations are all over the place. Two houses on the same street are a million dollars apart. My house is not nearly this, it's only $100,000. I mean, it gets to be crazy, you can't figure out what's what, and you call up the offices, well, that's what we did, we did this, this, and this, and this is what we figured out. I mean, it has here, my house was built in 1989, it was built in 1899. So, I don't know if that has anything to do-
Was it ever remodeled?
It had a little bit put on the back 25 years ago.
Okay, so that's a good question. You want to talk about the effective age, or should I talk about it? Yeah, I mean, just from a practical appraisal standpoint, when we calculate the depreciation on a house, we don't go by the year it was built, because we all know that if a house was built in 1899 and nothing was done to it, it would be nothing more than just a pile of rubble right now.
My windows are still warped and stuff like that.
But the fact that, you know, it would be given 100% depreciation if nothing was done to a house built in 1889, okay? The reality is, is that people upkeep their houses, they put additions on, they renovate bathrooms, they renovate kitchen, so we use something called, not the actual age, but the effective age. The effective age is based on the age in which the house appears to be in, okay? Is it subjective? Yeah, it's subjective, but we're not just going to depreciate your house 100% because it was built in 1889.
The difference between, is 100 years different.
So, now, if there were, at any time, I think the assessor would take out a property record card of your neighbor and you, if there's a discrepancy in value of a million dollars, and I'm sure there's a reason why this one's at a million and you're not, okay? Again, I can't get into any, I can't respond to that. You're putting us in a position where I have to respond to that, but I can assure you that if there is a discrepancy between your neighbor across the street having a lower assessment, there's a reason why. You might not see it, but there's a reason why.
Well, so I don't, I just accept it.
You could talk to the assessor about it.
Well, you could talk to me, or you could find-
Obviously, you could talk to me, we'll compare the cards. I can't, there's something called Daniel's Law that I can be very, very careful with about, you're all familiar with that, right? Okay, I could be very, I could be very careful about sharing the cards with people. I can share the information with you and the reason why. Daniel's Law is basically about the judge's son that was murdered a few years ago, and the husband was assaulted in the house. So, now, all those properties are, for the sake of better words, scrubbed from the assessment rolls, from the names, they still pay taxes.
I'm just going by what's printed out on public record.
Sure.
I'm not trying to develop anybody's personal business.
It's kind of a problem, let me elaborate on what Jim's saying. I am allowed to post all of the assessments by block, by lot, by address, by the assessment. I can't get, I cannot publish the property record cards.
I'm not asking, I'm just-
But within the property record cards is the answer to all of your inquiries. Now, I know that puts the public at a tough spot, I know what you're asking for, you want to know why-
It's so unfair.
You want to know, you, no, that's not what you want to know.
That's why I do, that's-
You want to know, you want to know why certain people on your property are assessed lower than you, or not proportionately equal to you.
Correct.
That's what you're asking, right?
Correct.
And the answer therein lies within the property record cards. Now, you can get that information by talking to the assessor, but we cannot give you those property record cards for you to determine that yourself. Is it unfair that way? Yeah, is that my rule? No. It's this rule called Daniel's Law, where there was this incident, and what they did was there was a proclamation done at the New Jersey State House, which said, public officials are not allowed to share any information to public other than people who own the public information. That makes sense.
We could get you a basic card.
Get you the basic card, but that's-
We've all sat on the street and witnessed somebody work for two years and build this incredible place and have the assessment go up 100,000. I mean, we're looking at it, and it's just a joke, you know, that the person with the same house at the end is paying, assessed at a million dollars more, and the person that's sitting next, I look like I'm an outbuilding to this house, and I'm assessed just $100,000 less.
Like I said, we're going-
It's 100 years older, this is brand new.
And like I said, what did I say?
I understand.
We're going to go and we're going to take care of it, right? And we're going to build-
I guess.
And we're going to build them back.
They already know my name who reported them, so you don't-
Okay. Now, by the way, everybody's house is worse than their neighbor's house. Nobody ever says their house is equal to or better than. That's why we have an independent person do the appraisal. Yeah, another example would be, there's always a reason. You might not see it, but there's always a reason. Somebody, two houses are exactly the same, they're 4,000 square feet, they're beautiful, okay? Built by the same builder even, same year. One of them's on Kinderkamak Road, the other one's on a cul-de-sac. I mean, I think we all agree the one on the cul-de-sac is going to be, sell for more, therefore, it's assessed for more. Now, someone can stand at that microphone and give that specific that I don't have in my head right now, but they'll say, well, my friend has the same exact houses as me, but they're assessed, you know, $200,000 less than me, why is that? I can't answer that. But when I get back to my office, I say, well, one of them's on a busy street, the other one's on a cul-de-sac, that's why the difference. I don't have those answers right now. But you call either the assessor or my office, we can get those answers for you.
What's your office's phone number?
You have it there?
Yeah. 201-493-8530, is that right?
Yes, 493-8530. I have a dedicated line to this, that's why I have to, 201-493-
8530.
8530.
Is that direct to you?
That's direct for Oradell to my office. We have a bunch of different lines, that's why I had to ask.
Could you say it again one more time?
201-
493-
493-
8530.
8530.
Yeah, I know, I'm short. Okay, you ready for me? Okay, so actually-
No, but here you go anyway.
Here I go anyway, I'm here, I'm asking. You actually asked my first question, which was, what's your contact information?
Ask my second question.
I have two questions, which I hope are on the short end, because they run parallel to this, but they're not integral to the conversation today. How do we, as residents as Oradell, learn about what the council is doing to attract or bring in more commercial owners and tax bearers? Just the learning aspect, I don't need to know what the whole plan is, if there is a plan, but how do we learn more about how we're bringing that more in so that we may, in the future, hold less of that 90%, you know?
I would think the best thing is, I'm sure whatever the council does, they're very transparent. In fact, it's the only town I know, and again, I think I told a few, is I'm the mayor in my local town, where we have subcommittees, you know, we have a budget committee that determines the budgets. Here, the whole council's the budget committee. So, if you would check the agendas, or call the borough clerk, or call me. Now, anything that's done as far as ordinance changes also goes before the planning board. And the planning board's very important, because they have to recommend any new potential changes in development. So, does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
My second question is, how are budgets in town audited? Is it the same thing, like the council checks the budgets, and do we have an outside third party that comes in and checks?
Oh, yes, yes, the township auditors, Lurch, Vinci, and Bliss, they're very big in Bergen County, and the auditor assigned to the town is a person named Dieter Lurch, and Dieter's very, soon as he heard this, he says, oh, no, we got to string this budget out, we're not going to let this happen. So, he's working diligently with the mayor and council to make sure that the projected, remember, that projected increase you see does not include this year's budget, but they're working diligently to get that reduced, I can promise you that, without giving up services, you know, you don't want them to cut police or ambulance, probably want them to cut the assessor, but, you know. But I did bring donuts, so anybody who wants, please feel free, grab a donut.
That's not the kind of dough we want.
No, but it was given to you by a nut, so, and I just said that on TV, so I don't know how that's going to play out.
You next. Oh, you next, good, okay.
Yeah, but either way, you'd have to bring up the microphone.
Thank you.
I'd just like to put the increase in context. Are you able to share, like, what the average increase in assessed prices for residential properties, or another way of looking at that would be, what's the increase in the aggregate residential property value in Oradell?
Sure.
All right, I have those numbers here.
So, there were, last year, there were 2,641 residential properties, valued in total And that was increased this year to $2,991,97,300. That's an increase of 20%.
I should have done my homework, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Could you break out homes versus land, or improvement?
I can't break out the land versus improvement, but I can break out, I can give you the commercial, do you want to hear that one?
Yeah.
The commercial, and the commercial, there were 102 total commercials. By Bergen County standards, by the way, that's kind of low, that's, Oradell doesn't have a lot of commercials. Those were valued last year at $231,437,900. And that was increased to $261,337,300, which is an increase of 12%. That's the problem. So, even though the commercials, you know, even though the commercials increased in the aggregate, they didn't increase to the same degree that the residentials did. So, let's think back to that redistribution example that I gave you, where now that slight- where now that slice of the pie, which is represented by the total 100-plus commercials, was just shrunk down in comparison to the residential part of the pie. And, you know, that's a trend, that's a trend that we're seeing in a lot of towns in Bergen County. It's just exacerbated in this town because, you know, you just don't have a lot of commercials to work with. And, and, and other towns that I work in, like in Paramus and Hackensack, and even in some of the towns, you know, South Hackensack, Ridgefield, you know, those towns, there's these large properties, commercial properties, that bear the brunt of this, that haven't gone down.
And remember, each, each town has a different... Each, every time I go without it, he looks at me and yells. Each town has a different niche. So like, South Hackensack's industrial, East Rutherford's industrial, Paramus, it's gonna be apartments. So everybody has, and the apartments are a trend, you know, you got apartments in River Edge, you got apartments in Emerson. If you took away the "Welcome to Emerson" and "Welcome to River Edge" signs, you wouldn't even know it's a different thing going up Kinderkamak. But those office buildings, they're just brutal. That was one of the reasons we wanted to do the annual reassessments because we kept losing so much money in tax appeals. And that's why we, one of the reasons we were able to sustain a stable, how would I call it, not giving up as many refunds.
We've all driven up and down Route 17 in Paramus and gone to the mall and so forth. Every time you drive up and down Route 17 and you see something huge new going in, that's, that all feeds into that, that pie that I'm talking about. Including in Paramus, where we do this exact same program, you know, we have, how many units going in behind where the Garden State Plaza is? We got 1,500 new luxury apartments going in in that parking lot to the west of the Garden State Plaza. That's, that's new. That makes that circumference bigger, see? And so that's where we're at here. We just don't have a lot to work with here.
Okay, I wanted to talk specifically about land. So forget the house prices. A lot of people in my neighborhood have complained that, you know, they say, "Well, their house price rose up a small amount," but, you know, the ones who didn't do renovations. But then the land rose up wildly. I mean, for me, our house went up 12%. Our improved, our land went up 44%. This is a fifth of an acre on which nothing has been done for the 25 years we've been there, sort of planting a hydrangea or two. And I guess I'm wondering, what constitutes a, what are the factors that would go into raising land by any significant amount?
Hydrangeas.
So, so the...
One died, so...
So, so we, you know, there's two parts to the total assessment. You're really taxed on the total assessment, not one of either part. So it's a matter of, of why did we increase the land and not the building? Well, simply because the market, when you talk about the most valuable, any Realtor will tell you that the most valuable aspect of your particular property is what? Location, location, location. Location is more than just the physical dirt, or the size of the physical dirt. The location is that you are in this town with this school system, in this particular neighborhood, on this particular street, okay? And regardless of whether you have a 1,500-square-foot house or you have a 2,000-square-foot house, there is a common denominator with both of those houses that they share equal rights to the community. And that community is, you're buying into this town.
I understand that. That's what I'm asking.
So we kind of bake that into the land value, is what we do.
That's what I'm asking. So here specifically, not specific numbers of a property, but what factors would cause one lot of X square feet to be valued differently than another lot of the exact same square feet in the same block? What would cause, because typically, I notice when, if you have X number of square feet, every, all the land assessments are this number. If you have this other, it's this. What would cause there to be an outlier?
Okay, I understand your question. There's, there's a number of factors. I mean, first and foremost, let's, are you re-assuming that the location is identical, right? Meaning...
It's all on one block.
Okay, but one, one block, it might be a corner lot where the one side of it is a busy road, or...
Not a corner lot.
Let's just, let's forget about the specifics. I'll just give you the reasons why, right? So, so it could be, sometimes lots are, are irregularly shaped where, you know, they have 10 feet of frontage, but it pie shapes out. Sometimes lots have topography issues. Sometimes lots have wet, wet issues. Sometimes lots have easements that you might not even see to the naked eye, but they can't build a swimming pool because there's an easement running through the back. Sometimes they abut against something that's in your neighborhood that...
Something like flood risk?
Flood risk, yeah. We, we have, we have flood maps. We have the tax maps, which show all the easements. When we do the site inspection, we, we look at, at a topography issue. You know, I happen to live in a town where, you know, you could have two of the exact same lots next to each other. One of them is flat, and the other one 10 feet off the back of the property, it drops down like a cliff. So on a tax map, it looks like, you know, they're two square, two-acre lots, but the one only has use of a third of that. So something like that could make a difference. Again, the, if you're, if you're, one property is abutted up next to power lines. I mean, there's all sorts of different reasons why lots could be valued differently, you know?
Then, if a person's filing an appeal, what constitutes a comparable or a similar home? And then, what, and then on one, on the flip side, what do you do if, and can it be just any home anywhere in town? Or does it have to be within your neighborhood or within your block?
Well, now, if you want to just learn a little bit something about what appraisers do. Appraiser's job is very easy. The best appraisal you can do is when there's a sale of the subject property, willing buyer, willing seller. Well, it's not hard to do this. I know what it's worth, okay? Outside of that, the next thing you want to do is you want to try and look at the houses on the street that are, that are exactly the same. But sometimes you're not lucky and you don't have that. So you continue to expand your, your range until you, you find the best, most comparable, and it might be quite different, but the best, most comparable, you deal with what you have. And then what you do is you start making adjustments to that. So for example, if your house is on a, let's use that, go back to that other example. If your house is on a cul-de-sac, and you find the exact same house on Kinderkamak, okay? Well, then you want to make sure that you want to make an adjustment for that, right? So if you're gonna come to me with that sale, you might say, "You have me for 900, and you have them for 500." The only difference is being on Kinderkamak. I'm not buying that. That's too big of an adjustment for that, right? And you have a good argument, and I might agree with that. However, if it's 10% off because they're on Kinderkamak and you're on the cul-de-sac, I might say, "Look, they're lower than you by 10% because they're on a busy road." And it's, is it subjective? Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna lie to you. It's, it's, it's very subjective. But it has to be done. Somebody has to do it, and it has to be done.
What if there aren't any comparable?
You just keep going until you find them. And you can go back in time if you have to and make time adjustments. You just, you do the best you can with what you have. The good news is that, you know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, before these annual reassessments were, were being done, I was in the business of doing these one-and-done revals where I had a job, October 1st of that pre-tax year. And I just had to do the best job that I could, given what I was given in that particular year. And if there was a neighborhood with no sales, I just had to give it my best shot. And then they had to stick with that for five years, 10 years, and it could have been wrong for that long. The good news now is that if there is a neighborhood where I don't have good data, but next month, the month after, the assessor gives me, "Hey, we just got a couple of sales there. Guess what, Rick? You're too low or you're too high." Boom, we make the adjustment. We don't have to wait 10 years for the next revale.
Okay, and last question, a quick one. I did apply to get my rate card. Very nice. It came within, it was emailed to me within 24 hours, which was great.
Thank you.
So thank you for doing that. Is there a legend? My kitchen is apparently an M31, and I don't know what that is.
Yeah, it's, I mean, that, you know what, that's, let the assessor go over that card with you individually. But yeah, if you have questions about the property record card, that's more of a, you know, one-on-one situation.
Bathroom's a B2, so...
It's not, you know what, that's not my format. That's the state's format.
I believe you.
I'm mandated to use it that way, so you can go over that with us.
I just wanted to say one thing.
Okay, Mrs. Schmidt. Okay, when they came around to measure your home on August 22nd, 24...
It says a kid answered the door. That's what it says.
Kid answered the door, yeah, yeah. But they, obviously, they didn't get in.
Victor, did they go in?
I don't know.
Don't blame Victor. Everybody, no, don't blame Victor.
I think you're at the wrong house.
Come on, Victor.
We don't, we don't have kids at home. I think you're at the wrong house.
Okay, I'm glad because we have, Mrs. Schmidt, for a finished kitchen...
It is.
Updated kitchen and updated bathrooms.
That's correct.
That's what the M means, updated. Modern, so...
What does the A and O mean? Ageed and obsolete, huh?
Original.
O, original, and A is?
Average. I thought, I thought she said agent. So that's what that's for. So, but you're, she, this young lady's a prime person who should call the company and just set up an interior inspection.
Why is an interior inspection important if you're measuring only the outside measurement?
Good question, because let's say we go to do a colonial house, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Let's say we're, the house are coming to, we're walking up the street, and there's a colonial. Colonial. Sorry, I don't pronounce my Ls too good.
Okay.
So in, in that house, there's, from the outside, we see it's got aluminum siding. It's got a gable roof. The house is 40 by 35. There's a deck on the back, an open porch. We got everything. But what we don't know is what's on the inside. So let's say we don't get in. We're gonna assume the basement is finished. Why? Because we didn't get in. We're gonna assume that the bathrooms are updated. By the way, maybe there's four bathrooms, the most. Well, you could have one in a, you could have a bathroom in the basement. You could have one on the first floor. You could have one on the second floor. Because the attic might be finished. There's windows up there from the outside. So let's put a bathroom up there. The quality might be good. We don't know. So it might give it a good quality, you know, might give it a good quality or might be an average quality. What I'm saying, and this is purely just an example, if we can't get in to verify what's in the house, according to the state's standards, we have to assess according to the highest house in the neighborhood. That's why we're so adamant about letting the people into the home. Very important.
Is what you've used to make these assessments your end and your end, is that reflected on records that we can get access to?
The property, your property record card, sure.
Property record card only has, as you've just said, if you haven't been in the house, it's only gonna have your, your ultimate assessments.
Oh, it has the estimate of what you have.
It's not, doesn't say what it's based on, does it?
Oh, sure.
You can take a look at hers that's briefly, it has a lot of information.
Now, I don't want to say I misspoke before, but with the Daniel's Law, we could give you the cards. I just gotta scratch the names off. So it gives you a little bit of everything.
What, what information can we get ourselves? Because you, basically, you're saying, if we're gonna contest comparable, if we're gonna contest the values you guys come up with, it has to be based on comparables. So how do we get the information regarding comparables?
Yeah, if you go on the website that we just announced...
Your website?
My website. It has all of the usable sales from up to, what, what Jim had said, up to October 1st, 2024.
For the town?
For the town, the entire.
But you're mentioning that the neighborhood is significant. If there's 32 sales, I think you said for the year, right?
Right, we have them, we have them grouped by neighborhood.
Okay, so I don't know how big your neighborhoods, how many neighborhoods does Oradel have?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I think if you go on the website, there's a delineation of exactly where the neighborhood...
So if you have 32, that's for a year. Is that for a year? That was this past year. Total, so 32 sales for the year, let's assume a half dozen neighborhoods throughout the whole town? No, just wondering that. Off the top of my head, I'm gonna say about 12. 12, all right.
But some are similar.
So maybe less, maybe two sales in a neighborhood that you're basing our assessments on?
Okay, so you take that neighborhood. Let's use a particular area, right? Area A. Now, the neighborhood is a defined geographic and cell prices and sales houses. There may be another neighborhood that's similar to yours that had more sales. Are you over 65?
Yes.
Do you get the senior freeze?
I didn't qualify last year, but you're telling me that the base year keeps moving up?
It's 161,000 for 2023.
But how far back did I go?
2023.
Okay. And, and what does that entitle you to, generally speaking?
What it entitles you to is if your taxes were $10,000 in 2023, and 2024, they go up to $10,005. In 2025, you get a check back for $500. 10 years from now, the taxes are $15,000. You get a check back for $5,000.
So it's frozen as of...
Yeah, it's not exactly frozen. You gotta pay it out, then you get it back, so...
So I'm not gonna get belittled too much in the way of individual, but my assessment went up about 25% on the card. The card is the only thing that I'm aware that I received. You're talking about other letters? What was in the other letters, generally speaking, and how do I get a copy?
Yeah, she has a copy of it there. If you want to call that number there, we'd be more than happy to. We sent it to everyone in the town. Did everyone get that letter? Nobody got the letter? Okay, so if you didn't get the letter, or you misplaced it, or threw it out, or whatever, just call the office. We'll shoot you another one.
So the only thing on that, basically, that's not on the card, is the estimated tax rate?
Well, it gives you the information, yeah. It gives you that. It gives you the information about how to get on my website, which actually does have a lot of information. It gives you information on how to get your property record card. And, and, and Jim, just to clarify a point that you said about the Daniel's Law thing, it's my understanding as a private company that I can give a property record card to the owner of the property, but if you call for other properties, I'm, I'm legally not allowed to give that out, so...
So we can get the card?
You can get your own, yeah.
If I walk around the neighborhood and I see other houses that look like mine, and I say, "I want property record card for this property and that property..."
I, I can't give you the property record card.
I can give you the card, but you have to fill out an Oprah, excuse me, an Oprah request, Open Public Records Act with the borough clerk.
And how long does that take? Because we only have till May 1st to file an appeal.
Well, first of all, you don't want to get, you can't compare assessments. So you don't want to file an Oprah on every property in town. If you wanted every card in town, I think they, that one guy can do it digitally, but it'll cost you. So they could do that, but they gotta scrub the names, that New Jersey record. I don't think you can. You're only entitled to get the sales.
The sales.
Of the cards. If, like, let's say you say 13 Phillips Avenue. You want the card for 13 Phillips. I could give you that card. Scrub the name, and I could give you the card. He can't. He has all the data on that, on his website regarding that. Has the age, has the square feet, the type of home, so bathrooms, bedrooms.
That'll tell us the comps that the...
That's where you would get, it's a good start.
All right, so a couple other questions.
The other thing you could do, and this is free, the one thing I won't recommend you do is, and correct me if I'm wrong, don't get an appraisal right away. An appraisal could cost you $1,500. Let's say we say your value's the average, $800,000. You get the appraiser, and it comes in at $825,000. You just have an increase in taxes. Now you tack down another $1,500. Call local Realtor. Ask them, "What will your house sell before October 1st?" You won't believe how many people come to us, "I got this in November, December, January." No, it's before October 1st. And they'll give you an estimate of value. Now, don't take that as gospel. Take that, go drive by the house. Look at the house compared to yours. See what you think, and you could decide if that's a viable comparable.
Are the county properties factored into what our assessments were?
No, they're exempt. Like the waterworks?
Yes, exactly, the waterworks.
Yeah, kinda, yeah, that's exempt.
So are we paying more because the waterworks are now considered county property?
Well, if the waterworks was private, they would be paying taxes, which would help reduce that pie.
The waterworks, at one point, was...
The true answer is yes.
We're paying more?
Yes.
If they were paid based as a taxable, ratable, then yeah.
The waterworks became a county park, probably, I'm guessing, 15 years ago, 20 years ago?
I think it was before 2000.
Yeah, well, I remember there were meetings as to what the town was gonna convert the waterworks into, a playhouse or whatever, but people were griping that they didn't want the traffic. So if somebody wanted to make an issue about the current state of affairs of our assessments going up 20 and 25%, if we... if we attacked the designation of the water, just the waterworks, for example, there was also a park named after one of the prior mayors on Oradelle Avenue. Corner Lot became a, a park, which I presume removed.
That's not really our discussion. I'm not trying to cut you off. I know the mayor and council are looking to hire a planner to go in to see what they could, you know, look at, yes. I'm not trying to cut you off. I appreciate it, but.
I get it, I get it. I didn't absorb whether the, if there's any change in land value, whether that's reflected in the, in the letter or not?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
No, the land's about, um.
It's just the total increase in the assessments.
Alright. Okay. Oh, so Freedom of Information Request? In, in other words, if we wanted to see, for example, what, you, you, how long does it take to get, to get fulfilled?
May 2nd. I'm in the office Monday and Tuesday. I could get it to you right away. If I get in touch with you during, if you call me on my cellphone Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, I'll look it up and I'll email, email it right to you.
It's a practical matter, because you know procedures. If we wanna be safe and protect our rights to take an appeal on the assessment, we can file a Form A or the Form A-1 which asks for comparables. That has to be filed by May 1st.
It's gotta be in by May 1st. Now, what you can do, it gets filed by May 1st. Usually, our hearings are July, June, July. So you have up until seven days before the hearing to provide us with the comparables and the county. So I'm obligated, with my contract with the borough, I'm obligated to work on all of these appeals, defend these appeals. And I said this numerous times today. I just wanna get to the right number, the fair number. So, once the appeal's filed, it comes, copy comes to me, I start a file. In that file, I open it, or one of my appraisers opens it, and if I see nothing in there, then we just assume we're gonna go down and defend the number. If we see somebody comparing taxes or everything, we're telling you not to do, we're just gonna go down and defend it. If I see somebody who has some real insight into whether the objective data is incorrect or the subjective data is off because of this sale, this sale, this sale, we, we spend time with it, we look at it, and if there, if you have a case, we don't allow it to go down. We settle it. We send you something like, okay, we're gonna lower you. Paperwork's filed, it's done. But it's, you gotta do the, a little bit of homework on that. You gotta do the right, right.
In terms of, the evaluation of the land is, I presume, diminished if there are easements on it?
Oh, yeah.
And the easements are listed where?
Uh, we, we have them on the tax map, but if you have a copy of your survey and your survey shows an easement and it's not on the tax map, I always go with the survey. So that's, that's very useful to have.
Is there some determination percentage reduction depending on?
It depends on how bad it is. Like, some easements just kinda like run along the side of the property and don't affect the property or the front or the back. But I've seen easements that cut right across the backyard, and what that does is it, it eliminates that person's ability to put a swimming pool, an addition, a deck, or whatever. They can't build on this easement. Yeah, that makes a, that's a big deal.
So, a related question. I live along a brook. I'm, I'm not gonna handle about two foot of erosion, erosion in the last forty years, but generally speaking, you said a cul-de-sac will kick up the value. Does living along the brook decrease the value?
I, it, again, it, we'd have to, we'd have to look at it and see to what extent. I mean, sometimes people have a brook that it's not banked, so like every time there's a heavy rain, it comes right up to their property, yeah. Situations like that, we definitely look into, for sure.
Okay, alright. And the fact that the brook is owned by the town, does that bear on it at all?
Possibly.
Possibly.
In which direction? I mean, towards the homeowner or?
Towards the homeowner.
It, it benefits the homeowner?
Yes.
Oh, because I remember I had to jump through hoops to get a tree removed. The town told me to belong to the county.
Yeah, we understand, we understand.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You may have covered this at the beginning. I was a little bit late. Do, do, do all towns and assessors approach the assessment the same way? Is the, it's always the same approach?
As far as valuation?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I've said several times today, there are a lot of things that I do that are mandated by the state. The format of the property record card, mandated by the state. The calculations, a lot of the base calculations that are utilized in the record card, if you look at it, they're mandated by the state. The means by which I measure a house from the outside and include everything in, including dead space, closets, stairwells, et cetera, mandated by the state. So there are certain things that I have to do, and the state does that because they wanna make sure that every, there's five hundred and sixty-five municipalities in the state of New Jersey where a home rule, which means that every one of these towns is doing their own individual reassessing. The Division of Taxation wants to make sure that if all these different towns are doing these things, different years, different cycles, different reassessments, we do wanna make sure they're all taxing everybody in the state equally and uniformly by these same standards.
So, with regard, excuse me, with regard to, uh, should have water, River Edge, how does ours compare to theirs? And how does that affect the Riverdale school system?
Okay, the homes are assessed the same. In other words, if you have a two thousand square foot colonial, and it's brand new, it's gonna, the value of the house is gonna be the same value as River Edge. The difference is in the land. If the neighborhood here, if that house would sell for a million dollars here and a million and a half over there, the land will be higher there. How does it affect the school? Complicated. So what happens is they take up the total equalized value of Oradelle, the total values of every property. The total values of every property in River Edge equalize them to, so they become a hundred percent. So what does that mean? What's the total value of each town? And then they determine their budget, and that's what the percentage is based on. So if our equalized value is a billion dollars and theirs is a billion dollars hypothetically, it's gonna be a fifty-fifty split, even though they have more children.
Okay.
That's based on property value. It's not based on kids. Kids will be like a sending-receiving district.
Okay, thanks.
Does that mean that comparables from River Edge could be used in terms of assessing that?
No, 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 you can't use the River Edge comparables. Totally different market.
Okay, so just to continue on with that question, so is it the same appraisal company that's appraising River Edge and Oradelle?
Yes, and the same assessor. It's a good-looking assessor in both towns.
Okay, then a few more questions. So the letter that everyone received in addition to the postcard, if you didn't get one, who am I reaching out to?
Two oh one.
So it's the appraisal company?
Yes.
Okay. And then if, this is a question from someone watching, if we're renovating a bathroom, how, how different does it make in terms of assessment?
How much increase?
Yeah.
Well, the two factors is if it's an original bathroom, it's all predicated on what the market value of the home would go up. So it's quality of the bathroom, the age from the prior year. I can't say it's gonna go up five thousand dollars or whatever. Yeah, just to put it in context, we can't, I can't give you an specific example of that. You can see it on the record card when you talk to the assessor, but I will tell you this, that we've already touched on this. The primary cause of value increase is the land values going up. And the land values are going up because of the market in this town. With this particular school, this particular community, it's a, it's a great town. It's a great community. I mean, it's no secret. It's on everybody's radar now. This and a few others. The market is hot, and that's baked into the land. So that's really the primary driver. Secondary to that, and kind of a distant second to that, is the, is the, essentially, the size, quality, and condition of the improvement that's there, okay? And then, much further down, is the fireplace, the heating type, the bathrooms, the half versus the renovated. So does it make a difference? Yes. Is it going to make some kind of a windfall if you take out a bathroom and your taxes went up? Probably not.
Okay, so just to leverage off the point of the town taking into, or the appraiser taking into consideration market value, with the volatility in the housing market, is that taken into consideration as well? Because in like three years, because I feel now we're setting up a benchmark, right? So in three years, let's hope there's not a housing bubble and a crash, but if there is, how does that now reset?
That's a great question, and that's the reason we do the annual reassessments. Let's say we did a revaluation this year. Assume there was no annual reassessments, we were done. Three years, two years, the market crashes. Then at that point, we would, could do nothing, because we didn't get ordered by the county. But every sale that I get goes right away to the appraisal company. Associated Appraisal Group gets sales every week, and they keep up with, they track the sales. So if the market crashes, God forbid, the we'll do, we'll do that year of the reassessment where we bring everybody's values down. I think in two thousand and twelve, we did that.
Yeah.
In two thousand, remember in two thousand and eight, nine, and ten, the, the Bear Stearns and everybody collapsed? And the values went down? Well, we, the mayor and council at that point wanted to bring everybody's assessment down to make it fair and also not to have more tax appeals. So we just did a quick numerical change when we were allowed to do that before inspections and adjusted everybody down.
Okay. Would you agree, like, the maintenance program that we had in place in the past couple of years, it didn't work to appropriately capture the increase in market value in our towns, and is that, or in our town? And is that due to the lack of usable sale information?
I looked at, I kind of anticipated this question, and I looked at the average assessment where we were five years ago versus where we are today, and had we had just done the revale, done no maintenance program, we would most definitely have been ordered probably several years ago to do a full-blown revale. And when we do a full-blown revale, it would have been a dramatic shift, okay? Because I do revales, and sometimes I do revales in towns that haven't had them in ten, fifteen, twenty years. I just did the revaluation of Elizabeth in Union County. The last time they had done a revaluation was nineteen eighty-nine, okay? The shifts were so dramatic there. There were some neighborhoods where they were, in one year, having increases of five thousand, seven thousand, ten thousand dollars, just one year. This is Elizabeth. And the shifts were so dramatic, because think about the market from nineteen eighty-nine to today. The numbers were all over the place, okay? I just did a town in Bergen County that was only ten years out, and the shifts were, were so dramatic. And so, if you think that what you got this year was a big shift, comparatively speaking, had you not been doing this, it would be far greater than what you're seeing now, and that's a fact. And, again, by, by doing this every year, you're keeping pace with that, that market. And there was a pop this year because, you know, the prices are moving. Again, that's, that's the silver lining here, is that everybody can look at their house that they're in and compare it to what they paid for it, whenever you paid for it, and you're doing pretty good. I don't care where you are in town. You're doing pretty good. Some better than others, but you're doing pretty good.
Well, unless your income hasn't moved at the same rate that your taxes expect, right, at the same percent?
Well, that's true, yeah, that's true. But, but a lot of people, their, their, one of their primary investments are the home that they live in.
Right, but you need liquidity to pay the property taxes.
That's right.
I'm not gonna sell my home to?
But, well, another point I wanna touch on, and this goes back to the, the pie example I keep making reference to. Don't root for the market to go down ten percent, and I'll tell you why. Because if the market goes down ten percent, think about what I said before. That pie that, that's gonna go down ten percent, the budgets are not gonna go down ten percent, right? The budgets are gonna either stay level at best if the market drops ten percent or continue to increase business as usual. And so, if I come in next year and I just give everybody across the board ten percent haircut, the tax rate's just gonna go up ten percent. That's it. That's the only thing that's gonna happen. So you're, you're gonna be paying the same amount of taxes, but now you just lost ten percent off of the, off of the equity of your house.
Yeah, so you're saying it's like inverse, so you're, either your assessment goes up or your tax rate goes up?
I, I mean, when, when we talk about taxes, it's important to understand that I know it's hard because a lot of times, you know, these, these, these school board meetings where they talk about these budgets, that people don't know when they are, they feel like they, they come and go. They set these budgets, these budget increases. The county, who goes to? When's the last time anyone here went to a commissioner's meeting when they talked about the county budget? I've never been to one. And the easier one is the town, because the town opens it up to the public, but you know, as Jim said, the town is only twenty-five cents out of every dollar. So, you know, it's really the budgets that are, that are driving this whole tax situation.
Okay, and then do we know when the tax rate is gonna be, the final tax rate is gonna be announced? Is that gonna be before the appeals date?
No, no, remember that. You can't appeal your taxes. You only appeal the value. The tax rate usually is adopted in July. Typically, we have to wait till the state to adopt their budget, which is June thirtieth, and then we are able to determine how much state aid we get, and then from that point, we can.
So the new taxes are effective as of what date? Is it gonna be retroactive?
Well, they're, they're, taxes are always a calendar year, but remember, when you get your bill, that shows your third quarter in August, your fourth quarter in, in November, and your first and second quarter. So, for example, let's say your taxes are four thousand dollars. Assuming they didn't go up, it's a thousand in February, a thousand in May. Now they go to five thousand dollars. That third quarter's gonna be?
Reflect the new rate, or?
Be fifteen hundred, and the fourth quarter's gonna be fifteen hundred. Then the first and second quarter go down to twelve fifty.
Okay, and then just in terms of next steps, and I'm pretty late to the game, but would I say, go get my property card? Right, well, eh, get the letter, because I didn't get the letter. Get the property card. And then if I?
Pass the same day.
Pass the same, okay. And then if I see a home that's been sold at the value listed on my assessment, so let's say, for example, five hundred K, I saw a home that was listed for five hundred K, could I come to you and say, can you give me the property rate card for that property?
Yes.
So I can compare my property card to the property card of?
Me.
The person?
Remember when I said I could give it to you? I gotta scrub that, but I also said if you file an appeal, let me know what comparables you're using, and I'll let you know if they're good, because you may have two out of five, so far, a half a million dollars.
Yeah.
You have two thousand square feet, the other one has?
Sure, so I, I think what I would do is I would say, okay, are there any comparable properties at the same square footage in a general vicinity if there are any sales? And then I would say, let me look at the property rate card to see, okay, they're at six hundred, I'm at five hundred, then I'm not gonna ask any more questions, but if not, that's when I would probably probe further.
But you hit it right on the head. You wanna get the information beforehand, so you can take a look and you know if you're on the right track, you know?
So the goal is to do it before May 2nd, which is the?
May 1st.
May 1st, which is the appeals deadline. Okay, thank you.
And the reason I also said, remember I said earlier, you could do it yourself. Let's say you file an appeal and you're not successful at the county. You still have the opportunity to go to Division of Taxation to file an appeal, so.
If you file an appeal and you, just to protect yourself by May 1st, if you withdraw it, do you get your filing fee back?
No.
Quick question, I'm sorry if I missed it. You mentioned the look back time, that if you can't find comparables in the October 1st to October 1st window, that you might have to look back to prior years. Can you speak anymore to the parameters of how that works?
Okay, so, if you live in a particular neighborhood and there are no sales within the prior twelve months, one of the things, my, the first thing that I do, and the assessor does, is, okay, is the neighborhood next to that neighborhood comparable? And if that neighborhood has sales, we'll look to that. The last resort is always to go back in time, because when you go back in time now, all of a sudden, you're getting into a completely different market, even recently. In other words, if I were to go back and look at sales from twenty-two, twenty-three, it really doesn't tell the tale of what's going on in twenty twenty-four, even though it's just a couple of years. Maybe back in the nineties, I used to go back five years, and a sale was a sale was a sale, and I could apply a two percent, two and a half percent increase per year. That's kinda the way things worked back then, but like, those days are long. But like those days are long gone. I mean, the market is moving month by month, let alone year by year. And what happens if this year, all of a sudden, the rates either drop a point or two points, or they increase a point or two points? Nobody can tell me. It can happen. We've seen that. And then that has some, due to some sort of political decision making or economic decision making, the values could be radically different in October 1st to 2025 than they were just, just this past October. So time, you got to be careful with time. That's what I'm saying. But if you, if you, if you have to, if you have no other means by which you can use data and you have to go back and try and project a trend based on that, then yeah, you can do that.
Thanks, appreciate it.
One quick one. Would you say that it's safe to say that when you do an evaluation on the outside and you don't really know what's inside, you err on the high end?
Yes.
So would behoove any resident to have somebody come in?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Commercial properties and residential properties. When a residential property borders a commercial property, what percentage of the evaluation is different?
Well, it basically.
Do you make an adjustment? I have to look at the specific circumstance, but yeah, that's a good example.
I was talking about the two lots to, I think the woman before earlier asked a question about what characteristics can cause two lots, the same size, to be different values. That's one of them, okay? If one of them is butts right up against a commercial property and the other one is down the street, it might be the same street, but I'll, I'll adjust for it. Because, I mean, quite frankly, if you had your choice as a, as a potential buyer, same house, which one would you buy?
Would, would, how would we be notified if it was?
On the record card.
In consideration.
On the property record card, it'll say it right on the record.
What would it say?
It'll say adjustment made for location.
Oh, thank you. Also, along the same thing, supposing that there are properties, and there is in the block that I live, that were contaminated by a commercial property. Were, are the properties available for a refund on their taxes because they can't sell their home?
If you have a contaminated property caused by a commercial property, I believe the commercial property is responsible for the cleanup.
Right.
Now, I hate to say like this, there's a value for everything. Somebody will buy a house or a property, no matter what, even a contaminated site, and agree to clean it up.
Okay. Oh, also bidding wars. We have people that get so enthusiastic, they don't want to lose the bid. And they may have bid $100,000 over what the, the house is.
Quite common.
And how is that considered?
Unfortun. You know, this is, this is, this is a good question. Let's, let's, let me give you a theoretical. If, if you're on a street and there's, you know, four houses or in a neighborhood, and there's 10 houses for sale, and all 10 houses, eight out of the 10 houses had, were product of bidding wars, that's the market, right? That's the market. I can remember doing a couple of revales back in 2009 and 2010, and some of these, I think Hackensack was the town, I was doing the city of Hackensack in 2010, and I would say 90% of the sales were short sales. So I had to come to the reality that I can't discount a short sale. That's the market, right? The market is typically, you know, there are outliers, okay? If, if it's one particular house that saw some crazy bidding war, but then the rest of the sales are just the normal, you know, at list or 10% less, whatever, then I just consider that an outlier. But when predominantly, most of the sales are usually at list or higher, that's the market.
So in other words, it doesn't make any difference whether it was $100,000 over the market value or not?
That was a, if a willing buyer, if a willing buyer paid a willing seller $50,000 higher than it was listed for, that's a good sale. That's a good sale. I just bought a home in the last five years and I paid 50,000 more than it was listed for. Nobody had a gun to my head. That was what I paid. That was what I was willing to pay for that property.
So taxes are, your taxes are, you can't do nothing with the speculation that goes on. You're going to pay the higher tax.
I look at the sales. Whatever the sales are, the sales are.
Also, our schools here, Rivendell and High School and the intermediate school, we were paying a, for the, for new developments to, to fix stuff. And that expired, one of the things expired that we did. And now we, we came up with a new one, which was a lower, and they said that our taxes would be reduced based on we're going to pay less money for the educational system.
Yeah, and I don't want to cut you short, but that's true. Because if the schools are going down in value and that their budget is less than a prior year, you're going to pay less.
Yeah, well, this was about improvements because they had to, we had to pass this.
That's not here. That's not for this poll. That's for the school board or, I assume what you're saying is if the, the amount, the budgets that they, the bond that they were paying off.
Yeah.
Now they got rid of that bond, and then they got a new bond or doing more improvements, but it's a less value or a different rate. Should you pay yes? The short answer is yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
One thing I want to add, for, as long as this is being televised, you know, we've been kind of beaten up on the school board, but the school board, you know, they will be very quick to argue, and rightly so, that the, the better the school, the more value that is going to come into this town. Your property values and these high values and this, you know, this sought after town in terms of bidding wars and so forth, is in large part, especially with the millennial class of new buyers, they're looking at the school first. And the better the school, the higher the values. So if they argue that, they're not wrong. Okay, so. And they are our biggest expense, you know? Teachers, like I said when I first started, that's your highest bill to pay.
No, and I'd say that's why I moved to the town for the school system and understand that you.
Where were you from before?
Ridgefield.
Okay, you said that, I think, yeah.
My question, at this year's assessment, what percentage of people let the assessors inside their house versus the percentages that just measured the outside?
I'm, I don't.
Like north of 80%.
Yeah, say four out of five, somewhere between 80 and 85%.
Let you in?
Yeah.
Okay. But, and thank you for today, it was really informative. What I get out of this, it sounds like part of the assessment process is very subjective, right? I, I don't know if what's being discussed, there's formulas and things, but each person and homeowner maybe feels their house has been overvalued or undervalued, right? So it seems like it's part of, of subjective process. It makes me wonder too, you mentioned the yearly assessment, that kind of then stops appeals from happening rather than doing it every few years. So that's kind of a benefit to the town. I guess you save money from not fighting the appeals. But it sounds like we may be prioritizing efficiency or effectiveness over fairness, right? So I guess my question would be, how are we sure that the process that you guys are doing is consistent and fair to the homeowners?
That's easy. Market. Whatever your house assessment is, in theory, it should be what you should sell it for. That's the proof. You're right, a lot of this is subjective, but we go as much as we can according to the manual and to, basically, it's all done by the manual. That's, the state gives us the guidelines to do. But the ultimate proof is the market. Hypothetically, let's say we did an assessment and I priced it all out, and I came up with a value of 850. That looks like it. Everything seems to make sense. Then they sell it for 750. Whoops, I made a mistake, so I got to readjust it down.
Okay. So what we see on the card, that's what if I expected to sell my house today, it should be around that number?
Not today, October 1st.
So six months ago.
Well, believe me, the market's gone up in six months.
And as the town's appraiser, I guess you're an independent kind of contractor, who approves your yearly assessment to keep you on as the independent assessor?
It's a five-year contract approved by the mayor and council based on my recommendation.
Okay, so if town officials are part of the approval process, what safeguards are in place to ensure their own properties are assessed fairly and transparently?
They don't even know who their properties are. I don't even know who their properties are. If you tested me right now as to who the council is, I couldn't even tell you. I, I have a lot of towns that I work in, this is one of 35 towns where I'm doing this Just to drive home another point to you though, and I understand that it is subjective, okay? We know that. And some people, you know, they get nervous about whether or not they're going to be treated fairly because of the subjectivity nature of this. But today, if you leave with one thing, know that we're offering recourse on two fronts. One, if any of the objective information is incorrect, we fix it immediately. That's our priority. And number two, if any of the subjective information you feel is, is off, meaning your house is worth less, we've said repeatedly today, what recourse, what actions you could take. And we're, we're all ears. I'm an independent contractor who, again, if there's something there, then we react to it. I'm independent from the mayor and council. They have at no time directed me to do any, any specific, they, short of, of passing a resolution, hiring my contract, that is where it ended with the mayor and council. And by the way, I know the mayor and council subjects my salary and my hours and stuff. If a council member or, and this has never happened in 30 years plus years that I've been working, if somebody comes to me and says, I want you to lower the assessment or I'm going to remove you from office, I go to the prosecutor's office and that person goes to jail.
Okay, so if we look at those assessments of those properties, they should be in line with the rest of the town?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. I'm not sure this question is for Jim or Rick, maybe for both of you. By the way, my name is Rick.
It's a good name.
Oh, thank you. Since the, the land value increased so much, so I have questions about the land. Say, for example, the land is like, say, 10,000 feet, square foot, and the house is 2,000 square foot. You taxed the land already, and then you taxed on top of that, you taxed the 2,000 house. Isn't that double taxed?
Yeah.
Just a question.
You, you, you pay taxes, you pay taxes on the total value. The total value. In many ways, I wish that they, the postcards that they sent around didn't break out land from building from total because it's, it's misleading. When you get that postcard and you see land value, building value, total value.
Right, right.
It leads you to believe that land value taxes this, building value taxes this. No, that's not how it works. You're taxed on the total value. When you set, because it's the market value of the property. You can't sell your land independent from your building and/or vice versa. Can't do that. And so you're taxed on the total value. So in many regards, it really doesn't matter. It's a matter of, of, of just kind of like parsing it out and showing the lead up to the total. So you can't say, well, I'm happy with the total, but the value of the land is too high. It doesn't matter. If you're happy with the total and the total you believe is fair and what you could get for your house, the conversation ends there. Because then at that point, it's just a distribution or delegation of, you know, maybe more on the land, less on the building or vice versa.
On the tax report card, we cannot tell my total tax, how much percentage is from the land, how much percent?
Oh, you'll be able to tell that, but it'll, it'll, it's important for you to look at that because it'll, it'll give you a sense of like what's really driving the total value that you're paying taxes on. So I know a lot of people that, you know, they might not have a great house, but they got a gorgeous lot. So when they sell their house, two things are going to happen. Either a buyer's going to come in and say, yeah, I'm not crazy about the house, but boy do I love this property and I'm willing to pay for it. Or quite frankly, a builder will come in and say, you know what, I'm buying this property. And then a month later, you probably see this, a month later.
Yeah, yeah, that happens a lot.
So, so in that case, 100% of that sale value was attributable to the land.
I got you, thanks. For the land, the flat land versus the land with a slope, does that make a big difference?
It depends. Everything's relative. I mean, I honestly, I think a flat lot is, my opinion, I think the sales will, will bear out. Every, every lot has a bit of topography to it. We look at the extremes. If somebody has, you know, 10 feet of land off their back door and then it just drops straight down, yeah, yeah, that does make a difference for sure.
Also for the, I'm thinking about to put a deck on my backyard. Does that increase the tax or how much?
A little bit, very nominally.
Percentage or?
Very nominally. I spoke before to, the major driver of value is your, is the land. Then the next is, is just your, basically your house, the quality and condition and size of your house. And then much further down the line, you get into the, how many fireplaces, how many decks and so forth. I mean, you got to put yourself in the mind of a buyer, right? If somebody comes in to look at a house in Arado, a young couple, say, wants to move here from Hoboken, and they step, they drive into Arado, first thing they see is they see Arado. They've done research on the school system, so they already know that going in. Then they start driving around the neighborhoods and they like what they see. Like way down on the list is the condition of the deck, whether there's a deck or not off the back. Like they look at, oh, what a, what a great street, what a great lot. Look at this house, it's new, we don't have to do much to it. It's big enough, it has enough bedrooms for our kids. Like way down the line, you know, of a typical buyer is going to be, yeah, but it doesn't have a deck. So does it matter? Yeah, it matters. I'm not going to tell you it doesn't matter, but it's such, such a nominal increase.
Okay, for the basement, if the garage is under the house, that's not part of the basement, right?
It's not part of the basement, but it's, you have utility in that it's a garage.
Yeah, it's a garage, but that.
So you don't get double, you don't get double hit for that now?
Not get taxed, right, for the garage?
Well, you'll get, you'll get taxed for the utility of the garage, but not, it's not considered basement, it's considered garage.
Okay, so garage also get a taxed?
Well, yeah, every house needs a garage. I think by code, every house needs a garage, right? Is that correct? I don't know, I could be wrong. I know, I know in the town I live in, you have to have at least a one-car garage.
Oh.
Every new house, yeah.
Okay, so if I want to get the information, say, for my, I want to try to figure out for my total tax, how much percentage is from the bathroom, how much is from the?
Property record card.
Property record card. And I can get from your website?
From him?
Oh, from you.
Oh, no. You, my company can give homeowners record cards, for sure.
My, my house.
I can't give record cards to anyone other than the homeowner because it's not, I'm a private company, it's not my, I'm not a public official, I can't do that. He can do that, but I can't do that. So if you want your own record card, I'm authorized to do that. If you want your neighbor's record card, I can't do that.
Go to Jim.
Correct.
I'm, I didn't quite hear clearly, did you guys mention before that how many bathroom or if the bathroom is half bath or full bath, does not really matter for the tax?
A little bit, not a lot. I refer back to what I just said before about the deck. It does, it does make a little bit of difference. If you get, copy your record card, you'll be able to put all this in better context when you see the increase for that versus the value we put on your land and your square footage and so forth.
And when they assess the interior of the house, if this assess, assesses good, excellent or something like that?
It's, it's, it's really.
Does that make a big difference for the?
Yeah, sometimes it does. Sometimes it does. But again, put yourself in the mind of a buyer. Okay, if you have two houses next to each other that look exactly the same from the If you have two houses next to each other that look exactly the same from the outside, condition-wise, same house, same street, all other things being equal, you walk into the one, and it has updated kitchen and bathrooms, the other one has original kitchen and bathrooms, it's going to, the other one's going to get more on the market. That's a fact. Talk to any realtor, they'll tell you the same thing.
So that makes a big difference on the tax for good...
It makes a difference. I wouldn't say a big difference, but it definitely makes a difference, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Thank you all for coming. Thank you for staying the full time. We really appreciate it. And again, we're available. What we want is to get the value correct. I also like to thank Mayor Coth for organizing this. This was something I think was needed. I'm glad it was a Saturday, so we had a decent turnout. I thank OPTV for, for putting this on, so it's available for the whole town. Again, my name's Jim and Rick from AS Appraisal Systems, excuse me, Associated Appraisal Group. Any questions, please call me. My office hours are Monday from 4 to 6, and Tuesday nights, 6:30 to 8. I will stay, stay late on a Tuesday just to sit and talk with anybody. Monday, I do have another commitment after. And, you know, whatever it is, I wish you all the best, enjoy your weekend, thank you, and God bless.
Thank you.